All right, I'd like to call to order the meeting at 5:30 PM. All right, we're going to start with, um, you need Kristen?
Kirsten.
Kirsten, sign officially sworn in. So you need to read that and then sign, and then I get to read you some stuff and sign too. Uh, outline it.
Oh, Kirsten Soroco of East Kingston, New Hampshire, do solemnly swear that I will bear faithful and true allegiance to the United States of America and to the state of New Hampshire, and will support the Constitution therefore, so help me God. Yes. I, Kirsten Soroco, do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent upon me as East Kingston School Board member according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
That's me.
Yeah. You, Paul.
All right. On this day, March 15th, 2023, I said Kirsten Soroco took and subscribed the above oaths before me, Andy Harrow, East Kingston School Board Chair. All right, do I have to read that monologue?
No, you do not. Just sign that back away. And place on file and then seal the vault in the SU office. Then if I can ask you to sign, it's extremely tremendous.
Do I have to give the official chair for the question?
Um, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's understood, but yeah, just for the record. Are we great?
Okay. So I make a motion to nominate Andy Harrow as Chair of the school board by second.
All right.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Woo-hoo.
Nail-biter.
All right. Again, welcome, congratulations.
Thanks.
All right, so we are going to open up the public input period at this time per RSA 18974, and then she'll go to six and a half hour, right?
Thirty minutes, yes.
Yeah, she'll go to 6:03. Um, if anybody wishes to have public input as we're doing a meeting, just find me down. Uh, on that note, do you have anything you want to start with?
No.
Excellent. All right, uh, do we have any announcements? Like to say for the record, thank to everybody in town that showed up and voted for the budget. It's good to see that, a bit strong showing there.
If I may, just want to thank Mr. Mizzi and his crew, the road agents, for not only making sure that we were all set yesterday for voting so that it could tip ice, but then to ensure that we could come back to school today after all of the voting as well as all of the weather. So I just public shout out for all of our facilities, people and road agents who took care of the towns across the city.
And are we doing a financial report?
It is included in your packet. Molly is away, um, after the Super Bowl yesterday. Uh, that's our Super Bowl, especially for finance. And, uh, we didn't see anything in here and didn't have any inquiries from members of the board. So we presented it in the packet, and if there were questions, we could either get their responses back to you next week and make a public board, or we could wait until April, but I didn't know if any board members had any questions relative to...
Sydney, I got her message about her being on vacation, and I can have any questions, so I'm going to...
And Kirsten, we'll set up some, as I wrote to you today, we'll set up some special time for you that we just get to sit and know each other and also with Molly to have a walk.
Excellent.
To unpack some things.
Okay, great, thank you.
Superintendent's report?
Uh, my report will be brief, as you can see on the agenda, there are several policies that we have that we do need to discuss. One of the items I wanted to bring back to this board was the, um... I lost it. Um, we contacted Primax with regard to the policy relative to school use and having outside agencies or, um, associations. We actually have to leave that door open. Yeah, sorry. We can chalk it halfway open.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Um, it's right here. So this was in question to a policy that we have and not having somebody from the custodial staff in the building when outside groups coming in, so we got a question about the liability. I was asked to go to our liability carrier, which we've done. I've asked them for their opinion. Their response came on March 7th. Thank you for reaching out. The coverage would apply regardless of who was locking up afterwards. However, we encourage having a memorandum of understanding in place to ensure each party knows their responsibility. So that does speak a little bit to the policy of what paperwork do we have in place for outside groups to use the building? Is there any, or is it kind of a wink, wink, nod, nod?
Yeah, there's the building use form. I signed up.
So I think as long as the building use for lists what their responsibility is for, um, safety, cleanliness, locking up, all of those things will be covered under our liability carrier for any unforeseen or unfortunate issues that take place.
Hey, Dr. Matt.
Hi.
Do you want to...
I mind, yeah.
Would you recommend that, because the East Kingston rec uses it all year? Do we do it once a year? I would do it once a year. Yeah, I think maybe once a year and identify the periods when they would be in here. So if you think they're going to be here all year, even the summer, then just list it. That's what I thought, because it's usually a war zone in the summertime. Before and after, as well, because returning is hard to clean it. So it's hard to have access. So that was policy, I believe, ECA that we had. That we had talked about, or was it the building use policy? I should have those.
Yeah, I think we're correct on that. Uh, ECA used... Yeah, so then I guess you have to then take a deeper look at the policy for passing. Have to change some of the verbiage.
Actually, yeah, that's a question to determine if we need to...
Well, I didn't know the response yet, so yeah, we'll have to change some of the verbiage in this policy. So ours will look a little different.
Does that go back to the policy board, or can we do that?
That can be done here, local. Uh, what I'd recommend is if, uh... Who, are you going to be on the policy committee moving forward, Tiffany?
I don't mind being on the policy committee. I'm probably prefer that, so.
I think, Andy, you're going to work through committee assignments tonight. So, um, at least that's, we have that listed on the agenda to work through committee assignment. So I would recommend that whomever is going to be on the policy committee could very simply work with me and/or Heather.
Okay.
And we can easily do it electronically and then bring it back for cable.
Okay.
Is there a charge to groups, or how does, how does it work if you want to use?
No, it's, uh... Filling out the building use form, Mrs. Hopmaster, you either can send a hard copy or electronic version of it, they will, uh, fill out, I'm a file prover. It's listed on there exactly which rooms, if it's multipurpose room, date of time.
Yeah.
And then any, anything you need, like microphones, projectors, chairs, anything. Typically, the stuff that we're talking about has been like the basketball teams that are all basically kids.
I know our group, at least once a year, I guess, we're going to do it in extra time this spring. And I just didn't know if it was, if that was free of charge or...
Yeah, free of charge, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And your, your, uh, whoever's, uh, we, I mean, I already did the paperwork.
Yeah.
So that, that'll be, that'll be the plan moving forward for ECA. Other than that, we were excited to obviously welcome our new school board member, Kirsten Soroco. We are excited to have Andy as Chair. So it's a new day in East Kingston as far as the school board is concerned. You'll be looking at Dr. Renee Bennett, who is going to be transitioning into the designated role for East Kingston, so there will be a meeting or two coming up. So she'll be out of the table in my absence. And, um, so there's a lot going on. And so we spent an awful lot of time trying to prepare, mostly for yesterday, working through all of our budgets, making sure all of our board members had what they needed. And we don't have to go far for Melissa Lyons, who we thanked last month, because she did win her seat on the board representing East Kingston. So we'll see her next Tuesday. With that, I didn't have anything further for this month's report?
Okay. I have a few questions. I was looking at House Bill 321, uh, and, uh, let's see. It requires all public schools to report like gifted, talented programs and/or not report, but I just didn't know if we had reported, like our programs.
To the Department of Education?
To the Department of Education, yes.
So that would be done through the Student Services Office.
Oh, okay.
Um, if we have reported it, it would most likely have been come from the schools through Alan Riska, who's our Assistant Director.
Okay.
How Student Services allow me to follow up and confirm that.
Okay, yeah. I was just curious as to, I think we would do it as a district. Yeah, I'm just like curious to see what program to be, who would get that.
Absolutely.
And then do you know, is that for view for anyone on the state website?
I'm not sure.
Maybe not work that out yet.
It might very well be through what's called the I-4C system, which is our, our reporting system that, um, is, it's not necessarily for public view, although the data is taken from it and then reported out through the Department of Education.
Okay.
So if, I would suspect that there's a category on the Department of Education website for gifted and talented program across the state. Uh, as, because I've been to it in previous years. I have not been to it this year, at least.
Oh, okay.
So let me dig in a little bit more.
Okay.
And we'll get that information for today.
All right, thank you. And then another question I had is, do we have a grant writer, like who took the, does that work in our district or like at our school specifically?
So we're fortunate, we have ample dollars under our grants, or Title, Title 1, 2, 4 grants, which are federal grants. Um, and within those, we've built in a small percentage for a part-time grant administrator. Her name is Kathleen Cuddy Egbert. She's retired superintendent from the, um, DeWolfboro School District. It's not Governor Wentworth, thank you, Governor Wentworth School District. Uh, Kathy's tremendous, she has a lot of experience as a superintendent. So she's worked hand-in-hand with grants because it was a, it was a smaller district where she was. So she manages all of that force. She's in the office on Wednesdays, and she works remotely two other days.
Okay, yeah, I just, when someone had mentioned like additional revenue sources to offset the tax burden, um, a friend and I were discussing what that might be here. And I never heard that discussed.
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Um, do each elementary school write their own grants for their own spaces, whether it's Title 1, 2, or 4?
They absolutely do.
So she would be more of a consultant space rather than the grant writer for the school?
Right, yeah, so she's our grant administrator. She's not the grant writer.
Okay.
Yeah, so Brandon will write out his grant activities.
Okay.
Um, he'll also do that for Reeve, uh, which he has more direct control over. Actually, Reeve doesn't even walk through the, her grant administrator office. Those are managed by the three smaller schools herself. Right. And, um...
So, that's my first report, Matt. Oh, yes, verbal, no, sorry, scrolled down. Do you have any?
Yes, I saw some things. So the motion that you made, Andy, here, for the Special Education Trust Fund, it did not have, who seconded that? And I believe a second came from Melissa, and that can be looked at on the off-line. Do you agree with that, Andrew?
Sounds all right.
Yeah, I agree with that, too. Then for the, um, June 11th public board meeting minutes, my statement should read, Tiffany Davriel mentioned that the governor implemented the 988 line and asked if that was included on the student IDs. There's one other line, this is to explain the stages of four levels. It says that 8 part, and that's supposed to be our part. The other thing that I wanted to add, Mr. Stevens thanks the board for investing in OG. I did hear him say that, and that was absent from this report. That is all. Okay, so I make a motion to approve the East Kingston School Board meeting minutes from February 22nd, as amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a statement? So let's do that again.
I wasn't there, correct?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Did you get all that stuff with she under?
Yes, we capture it, and then we do minutes from the court.
Excellent. All right, principal's report?
Thank you. Uh, so I just wanted to, I've been talking about it every meeting, the last couple meetings, but I just wanted to let you know that we now have 19, um, future kindergarten students that we know of that either went through the registration process or have reached out to Mrs. Hopmaster, uh, which is a great thing. And our expectation is we will have over 20 once we, as we come back next August. Our current enrollment numbers as of March 10th, we have 22 kindergarten, 26 first grade, 12 second grade, 21 third grade, 24th grade, 29 fifth grade, a total of 110 students. Something that wasn't on, on this, because we didn't have the dates lined up, but as of yesterday, I think so, finalized the dates for the agenda we talked about last board meeting, Tom McQuarrie, to come out to our building. Wondering if, how do you get questions from the reports that we had sent? But we have, uh, talked through with the staff, they're, they're excited for, um, visitors to come all the time and talk about, or witness all the great things we do here and provide any kind of feedback, whether constructive or positive feedback on how we had to get the whole child. In addition to, like I said, hopefully getting some ideas on how to utilize an outdoor space, which is something that I'm really excited about because of his expertise.
So, yeah, I have some questions. So at the last board meeting, I, you know, said I wanted more information, and I got more information, but that information to me seemed a little bit vague, and then it led me to request more information. And I know that there was like for the full report to contact, so I just didn't see anything that was descriptive in his work that I was sent that would speak to like an outdoor space. And then further too, I'm glad you talked to the teachers about it, because I hadn't reached out to them, because I hadn't gotten a full, um, wraparound of what the work would look like. Uh, you know, I guess it's like a free service, but, you know, say he recommends something for the outdoors, it's just going to be, you know, a cost associated with that.
Will it?
Well, I mean, I'm assuming, right?
Right.
I mean, you know, there's going to be a cost there, so...
Yep.
Yeah, I didn't really see anything in his recording that would kind of give me a better example of what the final report would look like.
Or was it something specific you were looking for?
Well, just like something that would speak to the type of recommendations that he would make at the end. Like a results sort of... What I, what I was shown was more of like a summary of the schools that he went to.
Yeah. Right, and that's what you get, is that summary. That's the product. He comes and provides a third-party objective perspective on how the school educates the whole child. A lot of this is on his website, which is educatethewholechild.org. And those were other schools, so he just, for instance, came back from Arizona where he provided some, um...
In Mesa, Arizona?
No.
Is it a Harris Elementary School?
No.
The ones that, the ones that I sent you were...
Those were previous.
Okay. He was just there.
Okay.
So for instance, if you want on his website, you go to Esque Le Banzo, which is in Tucson, Arizona. Uh, it's an elementary school in the Hollywood section of Tucson with gardens and chickens, serving as their main food source, an environmental inspiration for the community. So his role there was to see how, it's wonderful you have all of this green space and students are out working in it, how they're learning English, math, science, and social studies, all of the other areas that we want our students to learn, how they're also participating in learning about this outdoor space, and purely 100% sustainable. In Westminster, Vermont, he was at the Compass School, where he recognizes that it's both independent public school students in this one school, unpersonalized, running paths. How are they educating with such a different approach, an innovative approach to educating kids? What he wants to do here is come just watch how our teachers work, watch how our students learn, look at the physical space, see how the leadership leads, and then provide his feedback on, here's what I saw. And, and so he, he has a bit of a framework about, he has a framework on how he delivers that report, and the reports that you read is exactly what the product is, is we get that feedback just for East Kingston Elementary School. And then from there, all of the teachers who were excited about it will take and say, here's what he observed, how can we make this better? How can we expand this? Could that lead to a possible meeting? But it's no different if we didn't have him give us the feedback, and Brandon sat down with his leadership team and said, we really need to remove this area or that area, and that needs to be closed. So this really, it's just a, it's a snapshot from someone from the outside who has a specific lens of how are we educating the child, to provide that feedback to us.
Okay. Yeah, I think that is, you know, leaves for further clarification, so thank you for doing that. Because I was just, you know, expecting like a more in-depth report of, you know, recommendations of what you should be doing versus like a summarized report, so, yeah. I think, I guess it will be neat to see kind of the assessment like this of kids at the very least.
Yeah.
And then maybe we can get something from that, yeah.
He's going to be here, um, first week in April, I think it was the 3rd through the 5th, so I'll, I'll definitely come over and meet him. He's, he's a great guy to talk to, and, um, questions that you have that I can't answer, or I can't answer, I'm sure you will be able to.
Okay.
So I'll let you know the exact...
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would like that, and I just, sometimes I think it's just easier to talk to.
Yeah. Great.
Nope.
Okay, good. We are ecstatic that our, our Frozen Kids community, uh, I'm sorry, our Frozen Kids, School Musical is right around the corner in a couple weeks. Opening night is two weeks from tomorrow, which is amazing. There were multiple questions, uh, there have been multiple questions from some of our, uh, community members on whether it is open to the whole community, which it is. It is, uh, going to be first come, first served for those community members that do not have children as part of the play. So parents will have assigned seating all three nights as in past years. I think it's four seats per family, and then the remaining seats that we have will be moved to our members to attend.
Can they purchase tickets ahead of time, or is it a show?
No, well, there's no purchasing. It's, it's just, uh, we ask for donations, but there's no purchasing tickets. Uh, but it really is lining up at the door when the door opens. And then, because all the aisles are going to be used for the performance, and we have a capacity limit in our, in our multipurpose room, once we hit that number of chairs or whatever we have out, then those doors will be closed. And we will not allow any kind of seating in the aisles, so that's why we're saying first come, first served. All right. Uh, we do have two performances Thursday night and Friday night, and then we do have the old matinee on Saturday morning. Right, it was 11 o'clock? Yeah. 11 o'clock, right? Our 5th graders, once again, are going to have a great opportunity, um, over in Kensington at Alnova, combining with Newfields Kensington and Swayze School from Brettwood, May 9th through 12th are the dates. And we have been planning for a while now, but it's, it's, again, getting closer and closer as we, as we push forward. So, uh, yeah, May 9th through 12th, it's been eight grades, two years, and we're excited for our current 5th graders to participate. At the same time, uh, this happened in the exact same time last year. We had a conflict with our next early release day in May. So I am asking, uh, the board to amend our calendar and change the early release day from May 11th to May 26th, um, to, to get up to that.
And make a motion for that.
I think it'd be helpful, because I believe we had one last year as well.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to change the early release date from May 11th to May 26th. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
So I will communicate that with families, I think it was on this week. And the last thing for me, as we talk about early releases, at, at the SAU level, throughout all of our, our schools, K to 12, at the latest principal meeting, for the last couple, we discussed the possibilities of moving, um, some of our early release dates, combining them into full PD days for our staff, so it would be full days off for students. I think you probably all got the survey sent out a couple days ago. So we're just asking for input from families. Our staff received the same, uh, the same survey that was sent out to all of our families. Just asking for input on, on, um, whether, uh, whether we feel like it would be a great idea to potentially move from having nine or 10 early release days throughout the year to just a few early release days combined with some of those full days, which would be more than likely put at either on a Friday or a Monday for the long weekend, of course, without a break. Uh, there will be no instructional time that would, that would change. It would just be one thing replacing the other, but instructional time would stay the same.
No, it would actually improve instructional time, because we know what early release days does to schools. It also takes up the hazard of early release days on snow days. It could delay, and then you have one hour and a half to school, so we don't do that.
Okay.
We're discussing it more at next Tuesday's principal meeting, because we wanted principals to have time to send their surveys out to more important families. This would be for the elementaries only. Secondary schools are also considering your proposal, we'll be talking about that next Tuesday night. Call off board.
Is it easier on buses to not do that, or is that...
Much, much, because you, we have to, we can't have early release days for the secondary schools, the elementaries, because of the bus. And we just left two more bus drivers. So we just had to redeeep one giant bus route and make it a little bit longer. So, yes.
Anything to redeeep that?
Any space.
Not yet.
When is the duty for that survey, Brandon?
Uh, I'm going to ask parents again on Friday, and let us do it by the weekend, because I need the data for when we meet on Tuesday, the principal's meeting.
Okay.
Something else I wanted to add to. Oh, uh, the one thing that we did want to, here in my building, in particular, or in our building, we wanted to protect some of those early release days during conferences and that type of thing, which is why the combo will work better for us here. Just because of the feedback we received from our parents the last couple years on having those evening conferences, uh... show appreciation for those, because it always wasn't done here in the past. But because it's now become part of our culture, I know we think that way, so that time would kind of fit back and forth.
I just want to clarify on the half day, so it's moving from a Thursday to a Friday?
Potentially, but I'm asking for that feedback.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, back on the May one.
Yes.
Okay, so it'll be a Friday, okay.
Okay. Public comments, ending in a few months, does anybody have anything? All right. So, we've got committee assignments. And I almost wonder, do you know if any of these committees are meeting in the next month?
Wellness committee's meeting tomorrow. Policy's meeting tomorrow.
Policy?
Yes.
Policy's meeting for? Safety and security, there is no date yet for that one. Community engagement advisory group, do you have a date for that?
That is next Wednesday evening, 16.
Because that's a joint committee?
Correct.
So, to you, have you had a chance to look at any policy?
I haven't had any, no.
So, why don't we table this? And give you a chance to kind of look stuff over a little bit, and see what you might want to do, or if you have passions and want to be on committees? So, we've got superintendent evaluation, we've got a policy committee, we'll go over all the policies. Safety and security meeting, our policy committee, which Tiffany's been on recently. And then community engagement, which I've been with, which... Yeah, and you've done wellness recently?
Yes, so wellness committee, it just started, and that is actually a committee that I didn't know if we'd be interested in taking, because it meets after school, like I think around like three, period four, once a month. And I guess the timeline, we should talk to you about the timeline of these meetings, too. The safety and security meets during the day, the policy committee meets in the evening.
Is that on my component? Superintendent, you know, even on, I think it's typically, right?
It is.
Is, do you want to think about it for a month?
I'm going to say yes to that, because I'm always going to take my 24 hours.
You're not even 20 hours on the board.
Yeah, I'm going to say yes. I'm going to end up having multiple questions on each one of those. And my first question will be, can you duplicate? So, can two people be on the same committee?
Us?
Would be more.
So, yeah.
So, you can't, right, so that's my first question, if you're, both are already on two committees?
We'll be switching stuff.
Oh, okay.
Somewhere, somewhere normally done in the past.
Okay.
So, each session, we kind of shuffle stuff around.
Okay, so knowing that, I can start prioritizing in my head.
Yep. We'll walk through all of these in our meeting, we'll make sure you understand all of it. We start, Tiffany was, I think, last year, we had very similar, I mean, we do it each year. We formally welcome new board members, and we've kind of walked through, we actually have a textbook of homework. We all love it, yeah. Because you came into COVID. So, we'll have all this information, it'll be much more.
All right, so there's a policy meeting.
Tomorrow evening.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to attend that.
Great, 6 o'clock, or we can share the Zoom link with you, and you can zoom in from the conference room, geothermal.
6:00 PM, right, where?
SAU conference room. So, Heather will be there. The last meeting, several board members, several committee members zoomed in, you're welcome to do either.
Okay, so Heather will be there, please, have the location, and like, do most people live there?
Most didn't. Yeah, yes, because it's not, there's no quorum, it's a politics, joint board advisory group, and so there's no quorum requirement of it, therefore, it's not necessarily considered a public meeting. So, it doesn't fall under the electronic meeting laws that came out after COVID, so we can do it as soon. As long as we have a public space where people can come and sit, just space.
And Michael's saying hi to Heather.
Yeah. Love the company.
All right, same thing on the goals, read through our goals. Goal number four is really no longer going to be applicable, because we hired a new superintendent. But yeah, so we'll probably each take a goal, and somehow keep our body through the years.
And then goal number three is the five-year capital improvement audit. And when you get your board email, that will be under Google Sheets, so you can go in there and view that. And I believe we'll also set that up with safety being my first priority. There's a couple items there, and then it's like wonderful as far as the need for those items to be fixed, yeah. Google Sheets, new board email.
All right, so, couch the assignments until next month. Old business, we're going to need to revise that policy.
Correct.
Any other new business?
We have under policy committee, there are nine policies that we were hoping this board would approve this evening. They've come from the SAU policy committee. Dr. Bennett's are the special education ones, particularly are in policy relative to students with disabilities, so she's available for questions. We also have a couple of school security and district internet, as well as a revised policy for minutes. So, in your packet, which Kirsten doesn't have.
I can show my.
Oh, great. There.
Thanks.
You'll have summary briefs for each policy. And what it does is it simply just breaks down the nuts and bolts of the policy as discussed by the SAU policy committee. And it just makes it much easier to understand, I don't really have a lot of speeches.
Do you have any issues on all those, or any questions on those policies?
So, let me see.
And you have the?
Yeah, I don't remember having anything.
I'm looking in the board packet, and I'm just, I'm just looking for the policies. Yeah, I have mine, have mine.
The only one that I was looking at that seemed to have a lot of changes was the new one on meeting minutes. BEDG. There is a lot of changes on there, and I didn't have a lot of time to do it, to go through the RSAs. So, and not having Melissa here, who would have sat in on this policy committee, to be able to speak to these, I didn't know, Dr. Ryan, if you had anything to say about that.
I do.
It's pretty extensive.
Yes, and so they are a result of some of the non-public meeting minutes laws or law shifting. And so, we wanted to, at the request of council, separate the policy governing public meeting minutes and non-public meeting minutes. And so, we built back in from the original policy, the original sample from the School Boards Association, a lot of what they recommend to have included, so you can delineate between public and non-public. So, most of the red is all of the addition regarding all of the non-public meeting minutes, the steps that they recommend. And those are on page in the packet, 36 through 38-ish. And then prior to that was just kind of cleaning up and adding back in recommendations for public minutes. So, it wasn't anything that we developed in terms of language, it was more run through the School Boards Association's sample policy. Melissa was there, as was Patrick and Patrick O'Dea and Brian, we all three are legal counsel for different reasons, for different corporations, but just kind of sticking to our framework for developing our policy from a legal perspective.
Yeah, so legally, we had your, as, things, yeah.
Yes, and those RSAs are included in the file.
Okay. So, this one we do probably want to pass today. Yeah, this one.
All right, any other motion?
Yeah, I can make a motion, just to make sure. Do you have any questions, Kirsten?
No, I'm just trying to read this fast.
So, I'll make a motion to approve policies BEDG, ACE, IHBA, IHBAA, JLCK, EHAA, GBEF, and JICL. That is for Kensington only.
Second motion? All in favor? So, IHBEB is on our list, but should we need to note that, or there's a note there, this gets into the agenda?
I just want to have a quick look at that. Console will find. New policy, you can see where that one is?
IHBA?
IHBEB on page 22 of your packet.
Okay.
It's a new policy for Kensington only? So, I don't know if you're aware of that.
I thought it was, I was under the impression Kensington had the previous one that we added it, because all of the school districts had adopted it.
And so, my, what I read this to Dean is that it's a new policy because it was only in Kensington?
No.
Now we want all of the elementarys to adopt it, correct?
This policy was in every school district, we had it for a few years. We just tweaked it and updated with the updated law. So, this, this policy, all districts in SAU 16 had. We all had it.
And now there's changes recommended here, but on our description, it said Kensington only. So, when I saw that, I kind of skipped over it and folded it.
I don't, I don't.
I don't know why it says that.
I would have to ask Heather.
Quite through me.
Yeah, I don't know.
So, I didn't, I just, I folded it up and just brought it with me, just in case if it was a glitch. But I guess if that is intended for us, we can put it on next month's agenda.
Do you want us to just double check?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I would say we would need it in this school district. This school would need this policy if it doesn't have it. I think that's a typo.
It says all others last revised in 2019, so we have to go to the website.
Yeah. Read my mind.
IHBEB. My guess is we must have updated it.
Yeah, I apologize for missing that, I didn't even see that in the policy itself. We do have it, last revision date was 2017.
Well, what form, if I went on the website or if I'm looking at the packet?
On our East Kingston School Board website.
We did a revision.
This one was a revision, all others were last revised, yeah, in 2019. So, we would need this, because it updates our most recent policy we have.
Yeah, I think it has to be this one. Can I ask a clarifying question? So, as I'm reading this, I'm looking at the district may not impose criteria on independent educational evaluators. So, if a parent is asking to have their child evaluated independently, the district cannot say no to that? Cannot impose?
If a parent goes out and gets an independent evaluation, we have, the school district has no say in a parent's right to do that.
Correct.
We do have criteria around what we would accept in terms of the qualifications of the evaluator, the tools and the norm reference pieces. If it was to be considered for an IEP or a process, we would ask our policy states that they have to come and observe the student at the school setting, if they're going to be recommend, if they're going to make recommendations for what to do in a school setting, we would want them to speak to the classroom teacher and observe, so that would be in the policy. Yeah, and it, and sometimes it's the difference between independent evaluator, and then, and I want an educational eval, an IEE, which I want the district to pay for, those are, we're talking about two different things.
And so, this law, this, sorry, this policy change is stating that?
It's just, what it's stating is, the policy, if you want us to consider an outside evaluation, you're going to allow us to communicate with the evaluator. It's just all, it's just outlining the policies on how we would be a great, how you would work with the team, opposed to coming in to an IEP team, giving this, giving them a report that they, they can't see the results, can't talk to the evaluator, no feedback on the school came through.
Yeah, so I would say that we should table this and come back to it, because I think I just read the three-page report, because I skipped over it, so, and it was an error and you were supposed to, but.
That's okay.
I read it as in that it wasn't for us.
We'll make sure it's on the next agenda.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Do we have anybody asking for outside evaluations in the school right now?
No. No. Nope.
All right. So, we have a successful motion and vote on the balance of those policies?
Yes, everything but IHBEB.
Perfect, so we'll make sure that it's on the full agenda for adoption, and I'll give you more time to read this. Thank you. Any other new business?
I have something on my board goal line. Did the 3rd through 5th grade, would just be in the state?
April, sending a letter this week to parents. No, it's not till, April and May, we, May until April we start, and then we finish in May. Anything else?
No.
Do we have any reason for moving on?
We do.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just to clarify on non-public and public meetings and work sessions and all that, there, I guess there's no, everything has to be open unless it's non-public and there are just very specific reasons why you can go into non-public, right? So, there's really no work session, which would just be for the board and for nobody else.
Correct. Work sessions are considered public meetings.
Okay, because when you were talking about Tiffany... Okay, because when you were talking about Tiffany, you know, calling me up for policy and all that, you said it has to be open to the public.
Correct.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Is there any particular RSA which tells you what you can go into non-public for?
91-A.
Okay.
RSA 91-A. And it lists all of the different exemptions, or there are seven specific reasons. Well, you can go into non-public or you can choose to not go into non-public. But those seven exemptions give you the opportunity to protect for whatever the reason. So for instance, tonight, we're going to be going in under 91A32A, which is to protect the integrity of a different person because we're talking about hiring, firing, promotion, or compensation. And so that happens in non-public. And then if there's a write-to-know request, we don't have to share that specific information. But our minutes will reflect that we had a personnel discussion in a non-public session. And then there's another one that's called a non-meeting, that's my favorite, is a discussion with legal counsel over strategy to negotiate a bargaining agreement. And there, I think the affiliate to negotiate or discuss strategy for the purchase or sale of real estate. So clearly something happened years ago where someone lost a real estate deal, so they were able to get a non-meeting. And there are a couple of others. But all that is under 91A.
Yep, thank you, sure. All right. So we just need a roll call vote in order to go into a non-public session.
Motion.
I make a motion to go into non-public, I have to say for 91.
Yes, please, 91A32A.
All right, make a motion to go into non-public for 91A32A. Yeah, Andy, anyone else?
Say thank you very much.
So I would like to make a motion to approve the nominations as presented.
Second?
All in favor? All right. And how, what do we say that in the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And we are adjourned at 6:36 PM.